Go live on video here and Rachel Buneck is taking the efforts from our station office to come up and try to set this up. So that we can work around the provisions of the recommendations on dealing with the virus we're all so familiar with. We want to be able to have our meetings available to the public. Rachel, if you would be so kind, if you would explain to those who might be tuned in how this will work. And then we'll go through introductions and proceed.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Rachel. As Randy introduced, I'm with the Phelps County Extension Center. I'm going to take just a quick three minutes to introduce some people who may not be familiar with the Zoom platform. Everyone starting on today's meeting is muted. If you would like to make a public comment, please go ahead and give me a message in the chat box. You'll find the chat box at the bottom of your screen in front of you. The first thing I want to show you is at the bottom banner of your screen, we have a toolbar right in the middle. If it's this, you'll see a panel open up the right side, seeing everyone participating in this current meeting. Most people have their video off, and so only their screen name will appear, but if you choose to show your video, it'll also show there. This is what it looks like. You can see myself listed as an example on the host. On the far left side of that bottom toolbar, you see what looks sort of like a radio microphone. It'll say mute underneath it right now or unmute. Right now, everyone is muted, which means it has a red line across it, and it means your sound from your room isn't traveling back into the meeting. Again, if you would like to make a public comment, go ahead and tell me in the chat box, and I will unmute you so we can hear you. You can test your speaker and audio on your computer by hitting that small arrow just to the right of the microphone. It's called a carrot. And you'll get this message right here. It'll ask you if you can hear the ringtone that Zoom will play for you, and you can say yes. And it'll ask you to speak into it, something like testing, one, two, three, and it'll echo that back to you if they can hear it in the microphone. That's a way to make sure the commissioners can hear you if you plan to make a public comment, and you can do that on your end before you tell me that you want to speak. Additionally, if you're having bad internet connection this morning, you can join us via phone by calling the other number listed on the website. It's a phone number which will then prompt you to enter a meeting ID code, which is not this one shown on screen right now, but specific to the link posted by the Phelps County Boardhouse. But if you're having connection issues, you can call us via that as well and listen in on the meeting. All right, right next to that microphone icon on your bottom toolbar is the video, so you can either decide to show your video or to hide it, depending on your preference. Finally, to make it a little bit easier on yourself to always see toolbar, you have the option to click that little arrow to the right of the video icon and open up a settings panel here in Zoom. At the very bottom of that settings is that accessibilities tab. And you can click on that accessibilities tab to open up this option here. I like to activate this option to make the font bigger in Zoom, so it's easier to see, by moving this little circle from normal all the way up to medium and clicking this always show me meeting controls button right there. It means I always have access to my toolbar at the bottom of the screen, which makes it easier to use. Finally, our tool of chat. It looks like one of those cartoon talk bubbles that goes up to the side. And if you click that, it'll open up a chat screen, which you'll see all the comments I'm providing to you on how to use Zoom. And that's how you can let me know that you would like to be unmuted for a public comment. That's the last thing I want to show you. Besides the fact that if you do go to that participant screen, you'll have on the bottom these options to leave me a little bit of a cue. So if you agree with what's being said, if we ask a question, you can hit yes. If you disagree, you can hit no. If we're going too fast, you can let me know by hitting that go fast button. And there's also some fun ones there. We can put up a little coffee signal which means you're break. Those are just some more things that you can do as a Zoom participant. Finally, that's about what I wanted to show you today before the meeting. Thank you for joining us, and Extension has more resources available on our website as well as Facebook during this time. I'll go ahead and send you back to the commissioners.
Ready? Okay, thank you, Rachel. Just briefly, we had a conversation before we started about how to archive this, these meetings, the folks that need a briefing on how to use it. Rachel, would you be able to get it later? Is that a real call if you do, if Rachel can be available? How will you do it, Rachel? Is it YouTube?
I will make it available on YouTube. And we should be able to post the links on the websites.
Great, so they can start at the Phelps County website and connect in until, at least until we're able to open the courthouse back up to some of the guests. This is usually, I hope that's right away, but it's not today. Thank you so much, Rachel. That was a great summary of capability. Let me introduce some folks that are here today. Commissioner Larry Stratton to my right, Commissioner Jerry Higgs to my left, Director Pam Grozer, county clerk. We're joined this morning by Mike Kern, who is our emergency management director, Sheriff Rick Lisby, Mark Brookshire, who's the head of our facilities, and Andrew is with the Phelps County Focus, our newspaper, and Peter is from Pam's office, and he's going to be Rachel's backup. When Rachel can't be here, he's going to help us with this video challenge. We appreciate everybody's efforts. Look forward to making this work. Our first order of business this morning was to discuss our emergency order. And Ashley Wong, our director of the Health Department, is in Marys County for a little bit and is a little while out. But I'm suspicious we probably don't know what's going to happen here if you generally can enlighten me in any conversations you've had that it was due to be reviewed today. In the absence of other information, I suspect it's to continue. Is that a fair statement?
That's fair. I think there's the tweaking of some dates and some days. She also wanted to tweak the 50 down to 10 for the number of people. That's correct. And that's per the governor and the president's guidelines on that.
Our regional emergency order restricted social gatherings to 50 people. Since then, the governor and the president have come out with an order for 10 being the max. So that would be one amendment to our order. And we would need a new review date as this was the expedited if we drew two weeks.
I would agree with two weeks because we found that we had to tweak this over the past two weeks or so. But the president's going further out in two weeks, period. I agree.
All right, let's pick. Can you find two weeks from today?
The 16th.
That it would. Pam, can someone correct the dates in the existing order and reissue it as a proper procedure? Mike, any thoughts, comment?
No, right now, things go on well. We're just making preparations.
Ready?
Do we need, I think Ashley is going to update that in a couple of different places. Do we, should we wait for Ashley before we adopt the extension or?
I think we should. Okay, don't you agree, Eric? Wait till she gets here and see if she has anything else she wants to amend before you can file.
Input from the Health Department is critical to our decision to agree.
Do you have, did you, did you make any changes, Mike?
No, I was conversing with her.
Sheriff, anything else?
No, I was just kind of reading over this thing.
Okay, that's going to be our next subject, respect. Well, as soon as Ashley gets here, Pam, if somebody can put those changes in, if she doesn't have any others, we'll be ready to go, otherwise. We'll hold on until she gets here.
The reason I asked Rick and Mike to come down today is it is in preparation of the possibility, and at this point, it's just a possibility, of putting a countywide shelter in place ordinance in effect. But if we do that, we want to be able to act and react fairly quickly. So as far as implementation and enforcement of this, I think it's worthy of discussion before we get to the point where we need to actually put one in place. So I'm curious as to, as to, first of all, I think probably Ashley's been a week as to when we implement it. We rely heavily on her and on Phelps Health to give advice as to when one needs to go into effect. But once we put one in effect, how would we disseminate information to the general public? Would be through your office, Mike, as a first.
Through mine and through Ashley's and through Focus. We've just put on every page that we have.
But that comes from us, you, to the general public. Okay. And then the administration of that would lie almost totally with the Health Department at that point. Then the final part of that, which always is the difficult part, is the enforcement of it. I mean, if we're to do this, we want to write this correctly. We certainly don't want to be burdensome to any business, but we also want to be proactive on to the type of businesses that are essential and non-essential. And I think we would probably err on the side of liberally trying to determine who is essential and not essential.
We've had requests to speak up, please.
Okay. So anyway, do you have any thoughts, Rick, on writing that? I mean, the enforcement of that would eventually come down to the sheriff's office to enforce it. But we want to write it in such a way that it's not heavy-handed, because we don't, we don't want people to believe that we're shutting down businesses that need to and should be open.
Well, I'm not sure where this stands as far as the enforcement side of it is, is what they expect from us. The city just passed one, and I'm not even sure they understand, you know, what it involves. And I haven't seen anything that would tell me what our position in this is. There's nothing, there's no guidelines, there's no nothing, whether it's going to be requested me to do. Right. I got a little issue with that. A lot of issues with going out paid tickets and contacting, especially with people out of work, kids and who's going to pay for them and how it gets to that point. I don't know if you talked to Brendan about this, because it's a prosecutor. If you put an enforcement arm in this, we're supposed to go out and be ticket riders or whatever. Brendan is going to be ultimately responsible as to whether or not they're going to, you know, they're going to follow through with this. You know, and again, I really, I'm kind of not having a lot of knowledge about this. I just got it in my hands. Is that I'm not really sure what they expect from us. I know what they expect from the mental health. I know from the Health Department and from my experience in management and all that. But what it boils down to, us taking a position in this of enforcement, I've got concerns about that. I really do. And you're also putting my people in jeopardy by making them go out and make contact with these people, write tickets or whatever it may be. So, you know, there's a little bit of concern there.
I agree. I mean, I don't want, I don't want us to be overly burdensome. But yet, if there are entities that are posing problems to the public health, we need to ask them probably voluntarily to please abide by the social distancing and the number of people in a room.
So you're talking about enforcing on businesses, right?
Primarily, because that's what, that's what essentially this.
So what would happen?
Well, not all, because sheltering, the shelter in place order, just the ones I've read, there's 100 different kinds of. The ones I've read also, if there's people out and about who are, who are, you know, loitering, you might say, on a parking lot or not going anywhere, they could be asked to move on.
Just the only reason I was asking is because Ashley, would her department be taking complaints as far as businesses that are not essential that are open, and she would be the one that would go ask them to close.
Right. So then it would only fall to Rick's department when the people would absolutely refuse to close. You know, after one, two, three, whatever warnings.
And what is the teeth of that? What I mean, what's going to be required?
Well, it's.
What are you all asking us to do?
Well, we haven't yet. That's the trouble. If we write this, we want to write this appropriately. And it would be, the way it's written in most of the counties and cities right now is it's a misdemeanor. It's, you know, is it a class A misdemeanor?
I don't know. I don't have to your K O D.
Yeah, that's a little extreme. That's extreme. You know, it is extreme. You know, it's a hard time for everybody right now, and I'm just reluctant to put myself in a position where to go out there and start dealing with people where it's, a lot of people are going to be out of work. A lot of people are having enough hard times as it is. And I'm reluctant. Again, I think, I think if you're going to do this, it wouldn't hurt to sit down with Brendan and his people and sit down and talk to him, and kind of get some input from Brendan on this, too.
Absolutely, because ultimately, he's the one who's going to be prosecuting any tickets movement, right?
Absolutely.
Just for full, full knowledge, we are having a telephone conference this morning with Travis Elliott, who's a council to, I believe, Missouri Association of Counties. And he's giving us some advice on maybe what a shelter in place order would look like if we ever got to that point. I mean, I hope, I hope and pray we never get to that point.
But I do, too, and I think, you know, what's up with the, you know, the course, you know, I mean, you know, you know, there's a problem. It's, you know, and it's apparently a serious problem, but, you know, I don't know that we've got to that point, and maybe I'm not seeing what everybody else is saying, or maybe there's something out there that I'm unaware of. You know, you have a governor sitting up here that's basically not wanting to put it into effect for Missouri. You know, so what are we going to do? Each city and each county in the state of Missouri is going to start doing this.
And that's what he wants, each county to determine for themselves.
That's what he's just letting it out in your lap.
Well, yes and no, but to do it statewide in appreciation of what he's up against. If it was just, say, just Kansas City and just Springfield, it would be easy. But if you look at the number of cases that are in northeast Missouri, there's counties and counties and counties up there that don't even have a case. So why, statewide, shut them down, I think is his point of view. When they don't, when they're, they don't really seem to have a threat at this point. Now, that may be coming. Well, that's what I'm wondering, why?
We have a question from M. Collins. What's the difference between shelter in place and what we're doing now?
What we've done with our emergencies, emergency order, was to ask people very strongly to stay at home. If there's any way you can stay at home, please stay at home. A stay-at-home order mandates that you stay at home.
No comment yet.
Okay. Rachel, excuse me, Rick, I interrupted you.
No, that's okay. I mean, mandate, not really mandating they stay at home, all right? Because there is places they can go to, to do whatever they have to do. You know, I would hope common sense would prevail, that people just stay home and do this. I worry if it's the point we have to do something like this. You know, I'm not, I'm not real big on taking privileges and rights from people out here in the county. I just don't like that. And, you know, I would think maybe, gentlemen, that this is more of a watch and see thing before you even try to put something like this into place.
Well, I mean, I totally agree with you on that. What, my purpose here is that if Ashley or the hospital comes to us at some point and says, now's the time, we don't have another week or 10 days to determine what it should look like.
And I hate to ask this, but what, what makes them, the person that comes to you and tell you now's the time?
They're on the front lines of medical. I mean, the hospital certainly is on the front lines. And if their tent starts showing positives over there, we get, let's say we get five, and maybe we get 15, and then we got 40, we don't really have the luxury of waiting a week or 10 days to determine what the policy should look like or the ordinance should look like. So my purpose is to have one in place and ready should we ever get to that point. And that's kind of what.
I totally agree with you. I think making this, going over this information now is probably a smart move. I totally agree that you all need to have this in the back of your minds sooner or later when you may have to do this. Hopefully, it doesn't come to that, and hopefully, we're not sitting here now, you know, making decisions if this is going to happen or not happen, because there's a lot of unclear areas in this whole thing that I'm really not sure about. And just having this in my hand today was the first I'd read over. I know the city really, you know, and I don't think that was their intent at the time, you know, to say, okay, let's just go ahead and do it. Boom, let's do it. I think I got to give you all credit. At least you're looking ahead. I hate these things. And the gal say this is what we're going to do right now.
Also, the city of St. James is having a special city council meeting tonight, and the topic is this. So that's what Mayor Kerwick, he's called that meeting, and I'll be over there with the people of St. James, listening to their concerns, and they're going to debate. I think they're going to look at Columbia's and they're going to look at Crawford Counties and a couple others, I think, that they're going to look at. Just see what might be appropriate for St. James.
Now, I have a question for you all, but you're probably up on this level than I am. But the city passed an ordinance of theirs, which, as I understand, encompasses a five-mile radius. Is that, is that what I was told yesterday?
Yeah, that, the state statute allows for that, but from what I've read in the city of Rollins ordinance, it stops at the city limits.
Okay.
But it did allow, the state statute does allow for them to go five miles past their border, but they didn't.
So if you all as county commissioners pass this, does it encompass all the cities? Does it encompass the town?
Well, in this order, it excludes cities that have a shelter in place in effect. So if we were to adopt this order, the cities would be the cities that have passed one. And Randy's referencing the Crawford County.
Yeah, this is what I have.
And that's what you've been reviewing, Rick, so. It's not that this is the one that we would propose.
You're just looking at it.
We, this is just something we're looking at for what Crawford did. So, you know, we're trying to gather all the facts that we can. And one of the reasons the governor hasn't done it statewide is he believes that different counties have different needs and that the commissioners will be thoughtful and prepared if the time comes. They will have an appropriate order to pass, not, not just take the blueprint from St. Louis County or the larger municipalities to try to apply to our rural county. Because we face a different sense.
Who, who do you have, and I'm not sure that there's anybody that's going to have any experience with this, you know? I just don't see something like this coming about. But where have you seen, or is there anybody that can tell us what, what happens when you do this and you start putting enforcement into effect? I mean, I'm just curious, you know?
Yeah, that there are a number of places that have had a shelter at home or stay at home or in effect. For what? St. Louis, St. Louis County, several around St. Louis area. And Franklin County was, or wasn't, I don't know, but actually, Rick, all of 14 states have passed statewide shelter in place. So there's a lot of folks after that dealt with it. I only know of one, and I just get this on the local news cast from St. Louis. One pastor was cited in some place because he had a church service that exceeded the intended person gathering limit and was issued a summons and exposed to applying for having to tell that. That's my knowledge, that's something I've heard about, and I just have to get settled. So there are folks that are experienced in it. And Mike, some of your contacts in law enforcement might be able to enlighten me on that still. We'd love to hear about it if you find that. It's going to be tough.
I think the questions that people are going to ask us more is, is my business considered as essential business? And who's going to, people would not expect a certification from us saying, you're essential, you're not essential, you are, you're not. I think if you do this correctly and enough, if you can make your case that you're essential, you know, if, you know, a prevailing case, then I think we would probably go for that. There's 42 different kinds of businesses that are already exempt in the ordinance that we're reading. So it exempts all food businesses, all car, car businesses, I believe, are exempt, and home, home repair businesses are exempt, and it's pretty broad.
It is, but now, if you put this into effect, you're targeting individuals.
Yes, you are.
You're talking about homes, you're talking about families, that type of thing.
Yeah.
You see what I mean? It's not just businesses. It's now you're affecting the people out here in this county on their movement and their ability to come and go. And hopefully, common sense, like I said, would prevail, and people would stay at home and do that. But that's not always the case anymore, but I would hope so. But this is not the business I'm concerned about. It's the people out here that it's going to affect.
And that's who we deal with, the cities, obviously.
Absolutely.
I mean, the heart of it, and we know where these party places are. They tend to be around bridges and stuff like that. You go out there and there's 100 kids out there partying, then technically, that's, that would be against a shelter in place order. And someone would have the right, the Health Department, the sheriffs all along, whoever the term would be, they have the right to go out there and say, you guys got to go home.
I would hate to send medical out the tilt to disperse people, especially. I, you know, I took calls yesterday, people going out and putting up camps and tents out on government land, driving four-wheelers, getting away on weekends, groups and groups of them. And so we're, we're dealing with that, not, not because of Corona thing. We're dealing with because of some of them have become destructive as far as being out on roads and causing some issues. But I would hate to have Ashley or somebody from their department have to go out and try to bring up a party and fly the bridge, you know? And that type of thing, but.
Actually, it is with the president's order with the governor. Anybody with 10 people or more than 10 people are in violation of that. And in fact, it affected today. Ours is currently 50, but ours is 10, 40, 50 percent.
So it is 10.
Yeah, the shelter, well, the president's and the governor's order with Trump are, so it's in today.
But you're right about the shelter in place would have further reaching effects.
Oh, absolutely.
If you want a place in the county and somebody's got a swimming hole, and they got 50 people or 30 people up there in a swimming hole somewhere.
Yeah, so it's a lot more than just going to a business.
It is.
And that's why I said, you know, I don't have any knowledge of, and I'm not sure that you all have any more than I did as far as what's happened in the past when they've done this, you know, what was the outcome?
I agree with St. Joe's, it was early. That they're more heavy-handed to get people to.
Interesting again for me with the conversation with Brendan, who needs to have, you're just us, you're dealing with violent trolls that happen. What's there, what's there?
Rachel has an inquiry. Excuse me.
Um, Jessica asks, does, does shelter in place mean that people are not allowed to leave their homes?
Good question, Jessica. Thank you. And it does not, for essential services, you are permitted to leave your home. And I think, depending on what ordinance, now I'm speaking to the pattern you've seen. We do not have it yet, Jessica. Patterns you've seen say you can leave for essential business to include groceries, medicine, doctor visits, obviously, and also you can exercise on someone we've seen outside, provided that you maintain social distancing. And one point that I got a text message here that Bear is mentioning is that shelter at home is consistent with safe at home. Whole theory of the thing is if you're home, you can't get it, you can't spread it. It's not really, we're not trying to make people shelter at home. We want them to know they're safer at home. That's probably a good point. We go to penalize anybody who keeps them safe.
The question would, I think is parcel to this, is, is that you would have the right to leave your home to go through any essential business? Which, if 95% of your businesses are essential.
Also, that would include the employees of essential businesses, which the list includes everything from veterinary care. Also that would include the employees of essential businesses, which the list includes everything from veterinary care to lawn care. So if you work for a vet, lawn care company, you're helping your yards or fertilizing your yard. Your travel, human, farm work is, is, is permitted. So I, I do, I'm with Rick. I'd be able to see what real teeth that any stay at home shelter in place order would have. I, I think in all those, that's common sense. We know that there, there is a threat, a health threat. And that I try to limit my exposure by going to the store once a week. And, and getting in and out of the store. So, you know, I, I think it goes back to personal accountability more than any order we would adopt. I, I, so I, I have to be proven that this, that any would be a benefit to the health and welfare of our citizens. I want to see that. And Larry's right, we would, we would need recommendations from the healthcare industry, the health department. I, I don't know if we have any confirmed cases here in our county that were not brought in from outside. So how, are we gonna have a travel ban next? And have Rick set up at every entry into our county?
I don't think that'll happen.
Well, and, and so the, I, you know, it's a slippery slope, but I would, I would be reserved for, sorry. Let me, uh, there is Brendan Fox who just joined us. Brendan, we are on Rachel's side to set up now. We're, we're videoing the meeting.
I was downstairs on the phone, but I was muted, so I couldn't comment, so.
Well, we're glad you're here.
Come on up.
For those on video, the Don't Go, Brendan Fox is prosecuting attorney.
You missed Rachel's introduction. You can push the little button on view. We're glad you joined, Brendan.
I don't have anything when you started six and it said I wasn't on the.
Oh, oh, oh. Well, we're glad you're here because the one thing that Rick has brought to us, and, and once again, we haven't, we haven't adopted an ordinance. We hope we never have to adopt a shelter in place ordinance. But we also don't want the hospital to come to us and say, now's the time, and us take 10 days to try to put one together. So the, the, the part of it that, that would be Rick's bailiwick and willing to use the enforcement part of that. And our sense is we don't want to be heavy handed from the enforcement standpoint. And we want to be fairly liberal on who's an essential business and who's not an essential business.
Okay.
What's, what's your thought?
Well, as a third class county, my general understanding is we can't really expand beyond what's already kind of set by uh, the government at the state level. So we kind of be constrained to any decisions made by either the governor's office or the state DHSS, kind of their determinations. If we adopted an ordinance for a timeframe that is shelter at home, then it would be considered like any other county ordinance. My understanding, so the range of punishment for violations, if they decided to go that route and cite people or whatever would be the same as any law of large, things like that that are otherwise just set by statute. But this is a weird situation we're in because we have cities that are starting to adopt their own measures. Counties that are adopting measures and then statewide adopting the measures. And, uh, the overlapping gaps are kind of where things get interesting. So, for example, the city of Rolla has a stay at home. Not as though the sheriff's department is gonna be enforcing that, because that's a Rolla city ordinance. Likewise, the county of Troll. So it's kind of, it's interesting.
Brendan, if I may, who, who would be responsible for the prosecution of the Rolla city? So you would not.
I had nothing to do with it. It was kind of like a year ago when they were talking about decriminalizing marijuana in St. Rolla. Well, that's where this whole, it seems like things kind of seem to be progressing from the bottom up instead of top down, so. And we just got noticed yesterday that the courts are closing in person for three, they pushed it back another two weeks, through May 1st, so.
Wow. You will have an only version for it.
Now we're downstairs doing court via a different conference call. I'm gonna let you do a video comment at the time. That's through May 1st, you see. Yep, screen board. Uh, it started off as through April 3rd today, or sorry, tomorrow. And then they take it back two weeks and then they take it back a few weeks, so. Let's see what we're up in.
Okay, question. In my mind, a stay at home or shelter in place ordinance without teeth is no different than what we have right now. It's, it's an emergency ordinance.
Practically, yeah, practically, that's. I mean, we already have a, a commission order, whatever, the 2020 dash 3, 3 or whatever.
319.
Yeah. We might already have recommendations, but there's no, there's no real enforcement of it.
And what we wrestle with again is if, if 95% of your businesses are exempt businesses.
Oh, I know.
Have you accomplished too much more?
I know. That's, uh, I don't envy, uh, the legislative branch at this time.
Yeah.
I don't envy the enforcement branch either, but we're doing what we can.
I saw three, actually six kids. They were playing 300 three basketball yesterday at one of the city parks. And my mind goes, can they do that next week? Six good.
Uh, I mean, a lot of places have interpretive stay at home orders kind of liberally and things like outdoor recreation are still permissible, but the other ones kind of like fly. I don't know if you can play basketball and stay six feet away from each other. I, I try to, I just go to work for a while. It's, uh, I, I think they weren't closed the parks. That's a pretty great idea, but you haven't, you know, Andrew, I, I don't know what to say about it's.
They closed, they closed the playground.
Playground.
The parks are still open. Playground, the walking paths, the several, they're all still open, you know?
Now the city closes.
For, for, I mean, Rachel.
Person submits the question. I was wondering if they had thought of closing the parks. I live across from one and they definitely aren't abiding by the rule of to stay six feet away. They have definitely been more than 10 at a basketball court.
That would be a city of Rolla. Yeah, the city of Rolla, your ordinance would fight, already Monday. What is it like? They closed the playground.
Playground. Everything with playground, but it's been closed. The parks are still.
That they would be expected to maintain six feet. That's what they're asking.
I think that's a good question, Brendan. As we come up here, in violation of this order, would that be a class A misdemeanor? Which would, if they put this into effect?
I don't think it, I don't think, uh, I'd have to go back and double check because it came up whenever we were doing the annual park ordinance. And I don't think the statutes that imposed punishment for third class counties enacting quasi criminal ordinances, I don't think it updated and said it's the punishment of a class A misdemeanor. I think it says A misdemeanor, which the case law interprets to be a class A misdemeanor. And that's why the commission had changed that and specifically listed the range of punishment in that annual law. So as I recall, the long and short of it is if no, uh, the punishment guidelines are included, then it's by default the equivalent of a class A misdemeanor. But they can impose anything under that and spell that out with them being ordinance. So they could say, you know, not advising anybody to do anything, I'm just, this is information only. They could say first offense would result or the range of punishment is up to a $10 fine, second offense, so on and so forth.
They have a right to set that?
As long as they don't exceed the range of punishment that for a class A misdemeanor, which is up to a year in jail or a fine of $2,000.
So you know, with the patrol you have set down here, they can't force county to see.
Correct.
There has no effect on them whatsoever.
They're waiting on something at the state level.
That's gonna come from the state for them. So you have a number of state groups here, but they cannot enforce them.
That's why Rolla is kind of an interesting place because we're a rural county, but we're also kind of a more urban rural county to a certain extent because we have the hospital and university. We have a good sized municipal police force with the city of Rolla. We have an excellent sheriff's department with the, uh, uh, those kind of sheriff's department. Likewise, Rolla Police is excellent. Uh, then we have Ohio Patrol Tru-Pie here. And those are all, those are the three levels of enforcement of municipal, county and state. And there's not a whole lot of overlap except when it comes to forcing state statutes. So Ohio Patrol can enforce all state statutes, but not county or city ordinances. That these can enforce state statutes. County ordinance, municipal officer can enforce state statutes and city ordinance.
Wow.
This isn't a lot of fun.
Now, you know, I wanted to go, uh, go ahead.
Is, uh, is, we got an email from Travis Elliott yesterday with COVID just to him and Travis was gonna make himself available. We wanna try to call Travis while we've got Larry's here.
Yeah, like actually we're here.
See, I haven't heard from her.
No.
Okay. We were trying to square you out, Brendan. Uh, we've got to deal with Travis. He got to agree to discuss the matter with, he's sending the Crawford County ordinance for consideration and regulation. He has, um, uh.
I'd say, I think Travis was, was putting together time between 9:30 and 10:00 for us, so let's, let's not lose him at all. We can get him. His point of view, I think, was what authority are we acting on to be able to consider this?
Rachel. Do you have the capacity to?
Not us, Travis.
Find out how.
Travis is ready. We have some county commission.
Right now, you have four questions.
Uh, great interview.
Very well, thanks.
Good. I have you on speakerphone, Travis, with our elected group here, the commissioner, the clerk, uh, our emergency management director, Mike, is here, Sheriff Rick Smith is here, a reporter, and Rachel from down in the extension office, and Peter Elkinett's video conferences. And then finally, our attorney for our prosecutors here, Brendan Fox. But you've got quite an audience this morning. Uh, you've got quite an audience this morning, Travis, and we are really looking forward to the benefit of your counsel as we ponder that shelter in place order. How would you like to start this?
Well, we can start with top down, five minute executive summary, or you all can ask people whatever specific questions you all have. Whichever you all.
Oh, I think we're liking the executive summary idea by quite a bit, Travis, so you would proceed.
Very good. So of course, everyone's been dealing with these issues for, you know, about the past three weeks. And so, you know, we've kind of seen various waves and iterations. And at this point, what I have seen and working with counties all over the state is a spectrum of options. And so I'll kind of go through those fairly quickly, and if there are questions, please stop me. Uh, so I think talking about big picture, obviously, the situation that we're changing day by day. Uh, and, and so that, that is a challenge for everyone. And not to be flippant about the situations involved. I mean, what I've kind of been encouraging folks is to have a steady hand of my common sense. You know, it obviously needs to be taken very seriously, but I also have been recommending a major approach and not overreacting. Uh, what does that look like in practice? Well, I think it depends on partially what your community is experiencing and dealing with. And listening to, you know, the various stakeholders involved. I mean, your health department, your healthcare providers, your public safety, your businesses and your citizens. So that's probably all very straightforward and everybody is already doing those things. Uh, so let's talk about the range of options. So about two and a half, three weeks ago, what we saw was city, county, its health department looking at various forms of resolutions, orders and ordinances, uh, you know, that meant that either suggested, recommended or were no more than 50, um, people gatherings, uh, that quickly within less than a week kind of moved to the 10, you know, provision, 10 or more votes, uh, in gatherings. And now recently, probably within the past two weeks, uh, we've been seeing what it's for is a push for stay at home shelter in place type recommendations. Uh, so as far as county government goes, uh, I think there's a couple of pieces of authority out there that we can look at. Uh, one of those is 192-300. Many of you may be aware of, I mean, that is historically the statutory uh, authorization that counties and health departments want to, to regulate concentrated animal feeding operations. Uh, now it's being relied upon with respect to some of these, uh, animal health issues. In essence, with that, the statutory permissions that county health departments can pass in terms of those regulations to then the entry, the interest, you know, into the county. If you all were to decide to enter what I would refer to as a mandatory order, that is almost certainly statutory authority, you'd be hanging your hat on as a consequence of that. Then what that means is potentially, uh, we have to talk about enforcement and penalties uh, under 192-300, if you all were to enact something in that form or fashion. Uh, technically speaking, it could be enforced criminally. Uh, it is a violation of criminal law and it is classified as a class A misdemeanor. This is probably more Brendan's area of expertise than mine, but a class A misdemeanor in the state Missouri, you carry a penalty of almost $2,000 and/or one year in jail. Uh, the, the other means or method for enforcement is obviously a civil action, typically in the form of an injunction, starting with a temporary restraining order, followed by a preliminary injunction, ultimately a preemptive injunction. So whenever I get asked a question from folks about can we do something in form of mandatory order, uh, my general answer is, oh, it is likely yes. But my follow up to that or caveat is I think the devil is in the details. that or caveat is I think the devil is in the details. And so, uh, you know, one of the challenges the most communities have had if they do something that looks like a mandatory order or is a mandatory order, it is figuring out where to draw the lines between what we've been seeing is a lot of discussion about what is an essential business and what is not. One of the other things that has maybe not gotten as much attention because everyone is concerned about the health and safety of the public, but from a public entity's perspective, I think you always have to be mindful of, you know, rights of the people under the constitution of the United States and the state of Missouri, both the personal and the rights, second amendment rights, fourth amendment rights. And so, uh, we need to be mindful and have a major response on those issues. And, uh, and so that's, I think, uh, you know, a prime concern as well. And, uh, you know, what we've been seeing in some communities is they end up at that approach to distinguish between what is essential and non-essential, and then of course you have the intended, the, 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 I think, essential, and then kind of just that create smaller businesses who maybe don't have it, but it's not a point on essential. Uh, and we talk about those more in detail if necessary and appropriate, but those are kind of the issues that we have to work through in order to get into something that is workable. So one of the other approaches that some communities have taken, uh, rather than doing a mandatory stay-at-home order, is in essence adopting or passing a resolution that, you know, is in the form of a strong recommendation guideline of a stay-at-home or, you know, shelter-in-place recommendation. Depending upon everyone's preference and desires, you know, the, the big difference is whether there is a enforcement element and a penalty provision attached to it. Uh, I know that there are some communities who have put in mandatory stay-at-home orders, and they are enforceable. I mean, they're having law enforcement go around and inquire into certain operations for businesses, and at least up to this point, what we've seen is substantial compliance voluntarily with other, uh, one of the conversations I've had with many communities is, you know, if it is mandatory, uh, do you have the ability to enforce it? And secondary to that is, do you have the desire to, to what extent? And of course, if you're talking about criminal enforcement, that means law enforcement has to be enforced, uh, both from, you know, either the police department, sheriff's department, and, you know, including the prosecutor. If you're talking about civil enforcement, then you have to have a way to investigate those violations and be willing to file civil lawsuits to stop people if they're not, you know, once they're smoking with or not willing to comply. So I have lots more I can say, but I will stop there because I have so long.
Thank you Travis. You, uh, you filled our vein all of a sudden because we've been working on pretty hard and like a lot of your folks imagine that as well. Uh, the one thing that intrigued me was a, uh, resolution that was a strong recommendation. Do you say folks are doing that now?
I have a fair number of public entities who have taken that approach for a whole host of reasons. Uh, I, I will speak frankly with everyone. I mean, you know, the, the enforcement and penalty side of a mandatory order makes a lot of people very uncertain. I don't think anybody disputes the, the value and the benefit of folks, you know, staying at home to the extent they can and, you know, practicing good eye change and what have you, but, uh, you know, there's a lot of things, there are a lot of considerations that are being balanced here or should be being balanced. I mean, we have to look at, you know, health and safety of the public. You also have to look at constitutional considerations as well as, you know, the impact that it has on people and their ability to, to live and, you know.
Sure, yeah.
What have you, so I, I have a fair number of public entities who have taken that approach because of concerns about going to that level.
I understand. Oh, that was, that's intriguing. I didn't realize that was going on. Uh, we did do the emergency declaration, and we of course encourage all the things you mentioned, uh, perhaps a resolution that might be in order. What are the questions for Travis, Paul, the guy? All right. Uh, one thing came up that intrigued us just a little bit, uh, Travis, this Randy Burke camp began. Uh, the city of Ralla passed a, uh, the shelter home ordinance we're talking about or whatever you call it. One of the things that came up was their ability to impact a five-mile radius out of the city, and we don't think they did that, but we understood that maybe they have that capability. Have you wrestled that one yet? Anyone else ask about that?
Yes, I have. And I can, uh, if you give me a moment, I can tell you the statutory reference, but I, I will confirm for you all, but with respect to some of these public health concerns, there is statutory authority out there for certain classifications of cities in order to basically extend that authority within the five miles of radius, or territorial limits of municipality. And I don't know what classification those cities are, although I don't, I don't actually know.
Third.
Okay, yeah, so I think that that is, uh, I, I think that that is consistent with statutory authority, if you'll give me just a moment. Uh, I can probably give you all some specific questions.
Uh, I don't know. Uh, we don't need to just intrigue us on anything because those are kind of our folks outside the state limits, but, uh, but if they did do it, and we don't think they did it, that they did not, they did not do it. Okay, so it does not affect us, but it just intrigued us if they had that ability.
Sure. It's 77.530, folks.
Uh, 77, I'm sorry, excuse me Travis, 77.53?
Zero, yes, 77.530. And the closest analogy I can throw at you all is clearly the annexation laws. I mean, there is some statutory authority that allows cities to, you know, extend annexation decisions along certain corridors and certain distances, and so that's not the closest thing that I am running to, or to these issues coming up. It's a total surprise.
Okay, I, thank you. Uh, we found that a little intriguing. Okay, any other questions for Travis? I, I'm looking down my list of questions, Travis, you've spoken to them all, appreciate that.
My pleasure.
If, uh, we come up with questions, but you're indulging, we'll, we'll be in touch.
Yeah, feel free to, and, you know, one of the challenges that I think some of folks that who have been doing mandatory orders and ordinances in places is kind of a lot of questions about, uh, who is, and is it not essential in the context of, you know, what type of operations are, you know, either protected, you know, by statute or otherwise? And I'll just give you all a couple of themes of how those are challenging decisions to make. There was a municipality in southwest Missouri who put a mandatory ordinance in place, and initially, uh, firewalls, stores were told that they were not essential and had to close. Well, further discussion and analysis, everyone, I think, realized that there's a specific statutory protection in the state of Missouri that says, and all in the tail gets for a modification, and if they were in emergency, cannot affect their ability to operate. And so, you know, there, there are a few issues like that out there that you all need to be very mindful of.
Okay.
Kind of regardless of which direction you want to shift, but specifically if you're looking at mandatory, uh, there's a, there's other related issues that aren't necessarily housekeeping or security issues. I mean, I'm aware of one municipality who put a mandatory ordinance in place, and they needed administrative determination here a couple days ago that all horses are essential businesses. And regardless of the rightness or wrongness of that policy determination, uh, people are watching, um, and paying very close attention to those kinds of decisions. So I, I guess I would, again, I would just urge a major and thoughtful approach to those issues.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Stratman has a question for you Travis. Yeah Travis, mostly we've, we've talked about businesses and how this would affect them, but we're a rural county here. When the weather gets warm, kids show up at these low-water bridges, these low-water crossings, and they show up in droves, sometimes 40, 50, 60 at a, at a pop. If, if we had a shelter in place or a stay-at-home order, that would make those kind of gatherings illegal, correct?
Yeah, exactly what you're asking, I think the answer is clearly yes.
What about, uh, what about people having a, a wedding on their farm where they have a hundred guests?
The answer is yes, it would be illegal. Uh, the, the question then goes more to enforcement, which resides to both knowing about it and also a willingness to do something about it. So I, I think that's where the, you know, the real love it is here is you may not know about the event until after it's already happened, and whether you do, well, I mean, it, it might technically be a violation, uh, and then the question is, well, has the law already been done? And then the bigger question is, are you going to, after the fact, take some sort of enforcement action, particularly, you know, is a citation going to be issued to the folks who were there? Can you identify who was there and those sorts of issues?
Does that become a private property issue though?
Oh, yeah, I mean, that, that's partly why I started off mentioning, uh, you know, there, there are obviously liberty interests and constitutionally protected activity interests, but I haven't yet seen that come out to the forefront, but I think that the longer that this goes on, I mean, people are willing to play golf for a while, right?
Yeah.
Uh, and protect themselves and others and their families, but at some point, you know, people are going to, um, become less tolerant and compliant, that, that you're going to have some of those property rights issues that are sort of to rear their heads in some areas, you know? I have urged a, um, a cautious and major approach to all of these issues.
Thank you. Commissioner Hicks has one for you as well Travis. Travis, uh, is our county government exempt in any way from the municipal ordinance that Ralla adopted, uh, in that we have open commission meetings? Are we obligated to, uh, adhere to, to, can people rule?
So it's a good question. Uh, I, I don't know exactly the nature and extent of the ordinance Ralla adopted. Uh, if you all want to send that to me, or I can try and find it online, I'm happy to take a look at it. I, I don't want to, depending upon how it's drafted, the language and provisions that were included, I mean, lots of these practices exempt, you know, government entities, uh, if there are functions, essential government functions, a lot of different definitions are already out there depending on jurisdiction, and so I would be remiss if I told you, yeah, you're good to go, or no, you're not, without any point added.
Okay Travis, thank you. Uh, Emma has a question now.
Hi Travis, this is Pam Grob at County Court.
Good morning Pam.
What is the longest shelter-in-place, stay-at-home order timeframe that you have encountered of the ones you've seen so far? Who is going out the farthest? Or how far out are they going?
Is your question who or what is the longest?
What is the longest? What's the, what's the length?
Yeah, so I, I've been seeing, so most of them, I, I would say on average, has been somewhere between 15 to 30 days Pam. Uh, I have seen a few, and because I asked a lot of questions, I, I should tell you off the top of my head who it was, I have seen a few that appear to be extending some time into May, so that's probably the longest that I have seen, at least as far as local jurisdictions in the state of Missouri. And that's, yeah.
Thanks.
Uh, Travis, I did get one question to follow up on Larry's point. Uh, he made the illustration of like group of kids at a low-water crossing or a wedding. Now, the governor has passed a 10-person, you know, put that in effect, and I guess what I'm wondering, what teeth does it have? Do our, does our sheriff and his staff have a burden concerning the highway patrol? Do they have a burden to enforce that?
So my reading of the order issued by the director of DHA, PHSS, Dr. Williams, is the local public health agencies are the ones who are tasked with potentially enforcing the provisions of that order. Uh, so it, it doesn't appear to trigger any sort of local law enforcement or state highway patrol enforcement provisions. I understand the health department may disagree with us, so.
I wouldn't like, I think they did, but, uh, we, okay, so the health department, that's interesting. Sheriff's got to be related that, I would expect. The health department has enforced the governor's 10-person.
Yeah, how are they going to enforce?
Good question. Okay, thank you Travis. Go ahead.
And just as a follow-up on that thought, you know, I mean, I, I talked to, I, I don't represent nearly as many health departments as I do counties and municipalities, but I mean, I, I've had this discussion with members with respect to the governor's order, those 12 potential order requirements. And I mean, one of the challenges is, again, the ability to enforce. I mean, sure, if you know about a particular location, uh, maybe you have the, you know, the staff and the workers able to go out and have that conversation, but I mean, let's be honest, everyone's, you know, capacity or bandwidth is limited simply by the number of people and the additional obligations that everyone has right now. And so that is a real practical problem regardless of the people aspect of it.
Yeah, we can appreciate that, I think. All right, any other question? All right Travis, you've been most helpful, we certainly appreciate it.
My pleasure folks. If anything comes up, feel free to give me a call or email me, and I will do what I can to assist.
Okay, thank you Travis. You have a great day.
Thank you all, goodbye.
Bye.
I need to answer your recent question regarding the impact of the city of Ralla's ordinance on court hours. Uh, there's an exception for essential government functions, which is finding all sorts of any operation that is state or local, so I'm glad to hear this.
Yeah, I found that in the, or in the ordinance, uh, under E.
We have passed a state of emergency order that talks to 10 people.
Well, today.
Well, so we would be violating our own, well, unless we are excluded. We would have to do it our own, as essential, as being essential.
Just sharing, we did receive another request to please speak up.
Oh, sorry about that, okay, we will try to do that. What else?
We're waiting on Ashley to take this. Yeah, I just got a text from our decision to help us. Okay, we're going to put on our own, it's that way. She didn't, she didn't, I asked her, did you make any changes to update our emergency order? She said the only one was the 10-person one. It says, I would also suggest outlining punishment, misdemeanor A, is becoming possible for us to enforce and when we need some teeth. I guess it worked well. If we, we pass an order, then someone will be asking, right? Let's, can we do this for the day? We need to, we need to extend this order today. Let's make the one change, move the 10 people. Listen, this moment, let's not, let's not talk about teeth until, but let's keep that on the table. And if she comes to us and makes a prevailing case for it, and I know where, I know where she's talking about, I know exactly what she's talking about.
Do you want to extend as well? In addition to 10?
Yes, two weeks, two weeks, we can get that. Grant, I have no big vote on it. What's, Brendan, do you have any more thoughts on teeth? I don't know what to what extent she's having a problem getting people to. Businesses could close, I mean, it's, I mean, and this would be a tough prosecution. If Rick writes, take it, brings a queue, that's going to prove tough.
Recommendations, no, that's necessarily my... I'm not comfortable making recommendations to us too.
She, she's going to ask you to speak up, I think Brendan.
I'm not, I'm not really comfortable making recommendations to us to what the teeth should be. be, considering I'm on the enforcement side of it.
Sure.
But, uh, I would just echo what Travis said, that's, uh, a thoughtful, measured response would be better than a reactive one. And that's, if the goal is compliance, you can either use a carrot or a stick. And I would encourage that thoughtful consideration to take into account trying to encourage good behavior as opposed to punishing bad behavior. Because at the end of the day, we're all in this together and trying to minimize the impact and the, uh, potential harm to the vulnerable people in our community and, uh, while also trying to ensure that everybody's constitutional rights are still afforded them. So let me, let me get back to my point guys, making about, uh, whether or not, uh, our meetings are, are governed by our existing order. It says, number one here says, in immediately, social, let me stress, social gatherings. I challenge you to say that this is a social gathering. Whether public, private or public, this is, this is not a social gathering. This, this, by all definition, I think, to a degree, this is not a social gathering. We're here to conduct the business of the county. I don't think that, that the order that's as it exists has anything to do with army. Now, we can observe the social business and what we try to accomplish. But as far as existing order, I, I don't believe that it actually pertains to army. I, I heard our account, boy. But no, it doesn't. So. Just, just on that, I wouldn't recommend you try to pack fifty people in this office.
Well, no, and we want to, we want to try to abide by any, any, uh, order or, or resolution or whatever you pass. All right, thank you.
We've had a specific comment question from C. If the county inflicts state of emergency countywide, will it allow them as well to seize lands pursuant to chapter seventy-seven and eighty-eight of RSMO? I can repeat. Yes. If the county inflicts the state of emergency countywide, will it allow them as well to seize lands pursuant to the chapters seventy-seven and eighty-eight of RSMO?
Well, first of all, we've already adopted the emergency order. It's been in effect two weeks. I, I did this, try to take away.
Chapter seventy-seven plus third class, uh, cities of third classification, this is a county, uh, so I'm not aware of any provisions in chapter seventy-seven that would give authority to a county to seize lands. Uh, eighty-eight is public works and special assessments. Uh, I'm not aware of anything in an emergency declaration for public health, but, uh, bring that into play. So I think the answer is no. I don't think there's any authority to do so, even if there was some, uh, intention or thought to try to do so.
Anything else on this subject, folks? You've been most generous during the time. Appreciate you for, um, to help us with this. It's tough decisions and we want to get them right. Appreciate everybody's, but we regret that Ashley couldn't be here, but we've got to put it, I think we have correction on this emergency order. We will provide with a ten person and expand two, two, two more weeks before we get it again. And then we're doing so we've got to send out our apologies to the folks that work at the restaurants and they, the bars where we had essentially closed under this order, God bless them, and so proud of that, so much. They bring to our county, our cities, and we were, we were in and we were down. Everybody had to be counted. It was painful to have to do that because what impact it's had on those folks. And we hope they're able to get, to get through this tough time. Very minute it's safe to report blog on that deal. We will, uh, thanks to all for their understanding.
Have you read the governor's order on ten people that, and, and so do we already have that? We, is that an enforceable thing? Does that have to?
Which, which order from?
It's, it's from the Department of Health.
Department of Health, sorry. Yeah, he said, our problem is there's just been so many orders from every level that it seems like every day that's, I'm not sure. I, I probably have, but without having it in front of me, I can't really recall the specifics. Yeah.
All right. Bye. Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate all your business, your whole matter. Brandon, you all being sure, yeah, thank you.